The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to a special meeting of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Yes, thank you. Supervisor Chukri.
Here.
Supervisor Gates.
Here.
Supervisor Hickman.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
And Chairman Sellers.
Here. Okay, the only agenda item we have this evening is possible action relative to the election subpoenas, compliance, and litigation. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to authorize Chairman Jack Sellers to sign the agreement with the Arizona State Senate that resolves the Attorney General's findings, which the county disputes, which are dated August 26, 2021, agrees that all subpoenas to Maricopa County have been fully complied with, and ensures that the county's routers will not be handed over to the Arizona State Senate's vendors.
Second.
We have a motion. Who was the second?
Steve Chukri.
Thank you. Any discussion? Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really appreciate you bringing this item forward today. I think it's very important that our residents understand that this agreement that we're about to vote on is a win for Maricopa County residents. It puts this dispute to an end, which would have been a costly dispute. In addition to, you know, any litigation costs that could have been borne by the Maricopa County residents, we were also in a very difficult position because of the Attorney General's findings, that either if we didn't turn over the routers, we would end up losing nearly $700 million in state shared revenues, which would have been catastrophic to county operations, or alternatively, if we would have turned the routers over, this would have been incredibly disruptive to our operations here, would have probably had to shut down county operations over a long period of time, plus that would have cost Maricopa County taxpayers millions in addressing the loss of those routers. So, you know, that's very important for people to understand, and again, it's very important for people to understand that the cyber ninjas will not have access to the routers. What will happen is this vote that we've done here, or that's about to be held here, and this agreement sets up a special master who will receive questions from the State Senate about the routers and how they were used around election time, and then that special master will work with a IT expert to answer those questions. So, it's a win for transparency, and it's also a win for protecting sensitive data at Maricopa County, information about sensitive law enforcement activities, and also personal information that the county may have in confidential databases. So, again, thank you, Mr. Chair, for your work on this, and I am proud to make this motion.
Thank you. Supervisor Chukri.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that my colleague, Mr. Gates, touched on the right points, and we are trying to get through this and get this issue behind us. And of course, I think we have been abundantly clear that the sensitive nature of what's on these routers, and to protect that sensitive data is priority one. This accomplishes, I think, that metric for me while trying to comply and do the best we can in the spirit of cooperation to get this dispute and this audit behind us, and really, quite frankly, the voters of Maricopa County in this state. So, I think this is a step in the right direction to get us there, and I certainly hope for better days ahead where we can be discussing, as you said, Mr. Chairman, many, many other important topics and issues that are facing the county that we need to address as well. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Hickman.
Chairman, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm sorry, I'm out of state right now, but this issue has been extremely important to me and this board, and I will reflect back on comments already made. me and this board, and I will reflect back on comments already made. This is a big step in protecting the Maricopa County taxpayer. I took this job many years ago, and that was my key focus, to protect the Maricopa County taxpayer in all ways, and this one, and this agreement that you were able to get across the line for this entire board. Thank you for your leadership in getting us to this point. Thank you for the other Maricopa County elected's understanding, the key nature of protecting the security apparatus of the Maricopa County taxpayer, the Maricopa County citizen. So, I appreciate you getting here. I appreciate the Maricopa County Attorney's Office and your group negotiating in good faith, getting us to this point in a very troubled time for the county, and I look forward to continuing to work to protect Maricopa County taxpayer, the Maricopa County security structure, and I hope everybody has a great weekend, because we have other things to do starting next week.
Thanks, Supervisor. Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First and foremost, I want to thank you for your leadership during this whole year. This has not been easy for you or any of our colleagues on this board. This has been a very contentious issue being fought out in the court of public opinion. So, I do want to give you a big thanks for your leadership and just trying to guide this boat here. A big thank you to our legal team, Tom Liddy, Mr. Novak, thank you so much for the work they've done and continue to do. I mean, if you're ever going to have a legal team, this is who you want. I mean, they have given it their all. They have given up many sleepless nights and weekends just working on this stuff, and I couldn't be more proud of our legal team. Unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, this agreement troubles me. It really does. This has been a long 10 months. I think we're all kind of tired of it. I think the public is tired of it. We aren't dealing with rational people. We aren't. We're dealing with bullies. Let it be bullies in the State Senate, outside forces, and even really, unfortunately, an Attorney General that is wanting to utilize this effort, in my opinion, for his own political beliefs, or his own political benefit. But nonetheless, I think we will all agree, we have all been very disappointed with the Attorney General, and particularly several members of the Arizona State Senate. You look at what we have gone through. We have gone through so many threats. We have gone through possible contempt vote. If it wasn't for the courage of at least one on the Republican side, and several Democrats, to stand up for what was right, many of us would have been held in contempt. We've been sued a number of times. We actually brought our own lawsuit, which unfortunately, the decision by Superior Court did not come out the way we wanted it. But in that particular decision, the judge indicated that the subpoenas were valid, but he was not going to enforce them. It was up to the Senate to enforce them. Didn't stop them from submitting or sending a second subpoena, even though they couldn't get the support to enforce their first one. They don't have the votes. But yet, it doesn't stop one senator from misguided policy that was passed by the Senate. I believe it's Senate Bill 1487. I think we all know what that does. It allows one senator to submit a letter to the Attorney General and undo what 16 senators, 31 House members, and a governor was able to do, pass out a budget. This one senator was able to take it upon himself, send a letter, and then have the decision by the Attorney General that we must comply with the subpoena within 30 days. I think that's a misguided policies. It was the first time, I think, the county has been on the receiving end of one of these letters. I know many of the municipalities and school districts have been on the receiving end of it, but nonetheless, I think it's just a misguided, bad policy that is unconstitutional. The Constitution is very clear, but yet, here we are anyways. I agree that this agreement will not turn the routers, which is a subject, the routers, to cyber ninjas or the Senate. We're not turning over the routers today, but that doesn't mean that there's not going to be another chance at the apple. Yes, we're protecting the taxpayers by having such an agreement. We're not going to be subject to losing $700 million today, only today. We are dealing with irrational people, people that will go to any length to just prove a point. I've been there at the Capitol. I know the types of folks we're dealing with. When I was there, there was a small group. Now, there's a larger group that will just do anything they can to try to prove a point. And you're seeing it not only with subpoenas, you're seeing it with letters to the Attorney General. There's no guarantee that we're going to come right back here with another subpoena and another letter to the Attorney General. There's no guarantee. We're giving awful lot here. We sent a letter asking the Senate to reimburse us $2.8 million. This is what it cost us for the shenanigans that went on with there at the Coliseum, only for the purposes of trying to push what we, or at least I refer to in the public as the big lie. These shenanigans went on for a number of months, and they're still not happy. They're wanting even more. Now, it's the routers. There's nothing we can do, Mr. Chairman, that will satisfy any of these senators. They will continue on. We are dealing with bullies. We are dealing with folks that will not stop at any length. I wish, I hope I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman. I really do. I hope I'm wrong. I hope that this whole audit and big lie comes to an end today, but again, we're not dealing with rational people. I think we have alternatives. We have other options. Nobody wants to see Maricopa County lose $700 million, particularly me. I don't want to see the county lose $700 million, but we have the options. I think we should still pursue those options. I think we need to look at all legal avenues, and I think what the board has, but I think there's other legal avenues that we can go down. But this type of an agreement is, to me, it's nothing but wishful thinking, that it is going to put an end to what many of these senators are wanting to do, and that is continue this charade, continue this big lie, to continue to throw out conspiracies and unfounded statements. I don't think this agreement will ever stop it. I believe that in due time, it will come out that our elections were safe, secure, and accurate, and I believe the hard-working elections folks that have been under scrutiny and attacked will be able to stand up proudly to say, hey, we've done a remarkable, great job. If anything, I would want the Senate to apologize to every one of our hard-working elections officials that have done everything they can during the 2020 election to put off a very, very successful election, not only one, but several elections in the middle of pandemic. I would like to see an apology from the Arizona State Senate. I would like to see them to stand up and say, we were wrong. The elections were safe, secure, and accurate. Maybe we'll see it in the future. I just don't see that, I don't believe they'll ever say that. Mr. Chairman, I respect what is being attempted by this proposal, but I do believe it's not going to successfully end what has been started several months ago. I hope I'm wrong. However, I just have this gut feeling. We were, when we lost the first Superior Court decision by Judge Roberts, he had, the thought was, well, let's go ahead and comply and put an end to it. Let's get rid of it. We're going to comply, get rid of it. Never happened. We went down a rabbit hole, and it's been a nonstop disaster. Now, we have the same concept that we're going to, we're going to go on with this agreement that is signed by one senator, only one senator. I think she knows that she has 15 other members in her caucus and 29 members in her entire body that I believe she hasn't even consulted, but nonetheless, it's here. She signed it. Do we move forward with it? I think this is the wrong direction. I think we have other legal avenues, and I would implore this board to move forward with those other legal options. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, once again, I appreciate your leadership. I thank our attorneys. I hope I'm wrong, but I think what's in front of us is not going to accomplish what some might think. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor. And I know that we've all been frustrated dealing with all this over the last 10 months. Certainly, it has been a major distraction, but I feel that the agreement that we're dealing with today is a step in the right direction. At least, it gives us an opportunity to get back to a more normal operation here at the And one of the things I have tried to assure through this whole process is that we have involved every part of the county in these discussions. I'm very appreciative that Recorder Richer is here with us today, but every county department has been involved in our discussions about the impact of this litigation and the subpoenas and how we were dealing with this. And I really congratulate our legal staff for getting us to this point today where at least we can move past these subpoenas. We take the threat of impacting county's budget off the table. We take a lot of the issues that we've been arguing with off the table so that we can get on with some ordinary kinds of business. I truly believe that today's agreement resolves many of the issues between the board and the Senate, and it's important that we be able to work together. I think importantly, this agreement does allow the county to protect the integrity of the routers, and it assures our taxpayers that we can continue to provide the services that they're paying for. And I trust that the special master agreed to by both parties can help us answer whatever questions still might remain and allow us to get past this and have the matter over. We're certainly not giving up our rights to take action once the audit report is released next week. We'll always protect the right of our voters. I think that the thing that has been most important to us as a board through this whole process is ensuring that we are doing everything we can to protect our constituents and protect their right to vote honestly and fairly, and I think that's what we're doing. It's time for us to get back to work and do the things that we were elected to do, and I personally look forward to doing that. Again, I thank all the people that have been involved in this process. I know it's been very frustrating. I'm very encouraged by the agreement that we're dealing with today and think that it is a very positive step forward. We have more work to do, but we're here to do that. So, with that, is there any further discussion from the board? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
No.
That motion carries by a majority. Having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.